Okay, well, should we start?
Yeah, it's 5:02. Let's start.
Okay, welcome. It's 5:02 on May 25.
It's new.
Meeting is being recorded. I'd like to open up the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting and have a roll call after Court opens Concord.
Thank you very much. The Concord School Committee is called to order.
Roll call. Anderson present.
Booth present.
Present.
Mostafi present.
Wilson present.
Rainey present, sorry.
And can we have a motion to move to executive session?
Oh, yes, here, I have it. I will move for the Congress School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee that we enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law to conduct strategy sessions with all non-union personnel and purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with collective bargaining units, Concord Teachers Association, Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, Local 1703, State Council 93, AFL-CIO CPS Building Service Workers, CCHS Building Service Workers Maintenance and to return to open session at 6:00 P.M.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Out, I for both.
Miss Dad, I for both.
Mostafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Wilson for region. See you all there.
You there.
Are we just missing Heather?
Lost in space.
Did she get warped into another meeting somewhere? Huh. I don't see her. Okay, so we can, I think it's 6 o'clock. Welcome back to the May 25th Joint Concord Carlisle Concord School Committees meeting. This meeting is being recorded. We are back from executive session and I'd like to start the meeting with public comment. If you have a comment to make, please use the raise hand feature below or turn on your video just to alert us to your presence and your desire to speak. Please state your name, your address, and please keep remarks to under three minutes. Let's see, do we have any raised hands?
Sarah, Carlin Reed.
Yes, hi.
Hi, Carlin Reed, 83 with send. I'm just curious, I'm the Chair of the Peg Access Advisory Committee, and I was wondering if you folks have talked with the town about opening up the studio, which is open, which is located in the high school, to outside personnel, if that's even on your radar yet. That's it.
It is now, Carlin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? I don't see. Court, do you see any raised hands or any new videos?
I do not. I see a couple of people with cameras on, but I don't know if they're trying to signify a desire to join us in public comment.
There are Ed Fund people.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, well, that will close out the public comment session. Reading of the minutes. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from open session on April 13th and executive sessions from March 16th, March 30th, April 6th, April 13th, and April 27th?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you to our faithful scribe, Erin Higgins.
And roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
Out, I for both.
Mostafi for region.
Miss Dad, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you. Chairs and liaisons report. Do we have any this week?
We are meeting as a school committee with such regularity, there's very little time between the meetings now.
I think so.
We have a policy report, but it's on the agenda. We'll get to it.
Great. Thank you, Fatima. Okay, and then, so what do we have? Correspondence. The region, we received one correspondence regarding cultural competency curriculum questions. And Court?
And in addition to that, too, in regard to our early literacy programs and special ed identification.
Okay. Yeah. Reports for discussion, CEF grants. Welcome, Leah Butler and everyone else from CEF. I can't see everyone else's videos yet, so.
Hi, Denise Jansen.
Hi.
We have Sean Miller.
And we have, Sean is the head of grants and Bill Stone is here as well, and he is going
to be taking over for next year, so shadowing and has worked on the grants quite a lot this 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 year as well.
Thank you, Leah. And then, did you, you mentioned Denise, too?
I did, of course. Would not forget Denise.
Get off.
A lot, a lot has happened since we saw you last.
Hasn't it? No, hasn't it? You know, just for those who don't know the CEF, I'll give the 30-second pitch and not keep you on for long, but it's a group of parents that formed a board in 1996, and we, throughout the year, raised money through events, through teacher appreciation, through graduation balloons. And the core tenet and goal is to raise money to help teachers fund creative innovative projects that might not otherwise be funded by the district. So, since we were founded, we've raised well over $2 million and given that back to Concord Carlisle and the overall regional school district for Concord. So, we're very excited about that. And Court, you're 100% right, a lot has changed since we last saw each other, probably this month or, I think, in June of last year. That being said, though, I'm very optimistic. We had a good year. We raised, we had 14 grant submissions versus 22 last in the previous year, so I'm okay with that. We were able to fund nine of them. This year, the majority of the grants came from the high school, where in the previous year, it was definitely CMS just led the way. And Throw got on the board this year with a, with a small grant around a Story Walk at Throw. So, overall, the total amount, the total gift this year is going to be $57,829. And we're very excited about that. Give you a little bit of summary around some of the grants that were submitted this year. Story Walk at Throw, that's taking a walk through the woods and a literacy where you can kind of read a story as you walk through the woods at different points. We were able to fund a course event. We got a laser cutter for the engineering program at the high school. Were able to fund two field trips for the ninth grade academy. Able to fund a video series for Picture a Scientist, which helps more diversity within the science community and a number of other things. So, no, it wasn't as much as last year. We totally get the crazy year we were in, but we're super happy that we still got 14 submissions, nine approved. And we'll get the gift to Ripley Finance Department within, you know, the next couple of weeks.
Well, you said you are super happy. We are super happy. And you, more than anybody CEF team, knows that these are not gifts. These are well-earned support that can only happen with, with your help, and they truly inspire teachers and in turn inspire kids. So, thank you for your, your leadership in that arena. It means, means the world to, to everybody in the schools.
Absolutely. It's an honor and a privilege for us to be here, and, you know, this is a very supportive community, and we've had a lot of very enthusiastic teachers, and we have a great collaboration with Dr. Hunter and the other administrators. So, we are very happy to be here.
We are very happy you're here, and we are lucky to have all of you on board. So, thank you.
I think it's amazing that you were able to do that much in this year. I mean, most fundraising organizations just, you know, hit the pause button for a while. So, the fact that you were able to raise that much and that there was that much interest, I think speaks volumes to the organization that you are and all the effort that went into it. Not to mention all of the Zoom that happened. Remember that Zoom was kind of kicked off by you guys over a year ago when you helped us fund Zoom for the high school. I mean, you're an integral part of what we do, so thank you so much. This is.
Thank you, Heather. I think actually the reason we were able to fundraise as much as we were was because of the community's reaction to everything that the schools, the teachers, the administration, your board did. It just felt like a real feel-good this year in terms of the community just wanted to support. So, we were just so happy to see that. That's great.
And I'll just name, we also had support for bike racks across all the schools, and now they're subsidizing the Challenge Success Survey the kids are taking as they leave this spring. So, it's, it's, it's been an ongoing level of support regularly for the last many, many years, but especially this past year.
Yeah, Lori, that Challenge Success and the bike racks are actually at the bottom, not at the bottom, but it's, I didn't want to go through the whole list, but yeah, so Challenge Success, and then you're all going to see these really cool bike stations. It's not just a rack. You're going to be able to blow up your bike tires. You're going to be able to repair it with all these different tools that are attached. And that was actually, Bill, you can tell me, I think that was a fall out of season grant. We usually don't do those, but in this case with COVID, I live over by Throw, and I could see all the bikes finally up in sidewalks. And then I think that was, I don't think, that definitely was happening at other schools. So, hopefully that trend of riding your bike to school doesn't end, but they'll all have now spots to fix, repair, and blow up their bike tires.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I just say, we are all invested in Challenge Success, and it's amazing. And thank you very much for investing in Challenge Success as parents. And on behalf of Challenge Success, I'm a huge advocate of Challenge Success, and do want to thank you on behalf of Challenge Success for investing in that program. Thank you.
That was a two-funded project. So, there's a portion going to the high school, and there's a portion going to CMS.
Thank you, and have a, have a great summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Leah. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Sean, very, very, very much. We're very indebted to you.
Yes.
Not at all. We look forward to next year. We'll see you here next year. All right, be well.
Maybe not here, maybe.
In person.
That'd be nice.
Thank you.
That was very, very nice. We are very, very fortunate.
Nice to have some spots of optimism in our meetings, huh? That's a good one.
So, this is not the first time we've talked about innovation today. One way that cultures change is by observing what leaders pay attention to, and those are community leaders who are paying attention to teachers and innovation and therefore helping to steer the ship in a, in a very exciting way.
Okay, great. So, summer school 2021.
And this is a high level. We can certainly bring you updates as it actually happens. This is where we are. We are, I'll just highlight it for you. Four distinct populations, obviously extended school year for special education, elementary aged for kids falling out or below benchmark, ELL students, and our incoming, one of my, I get to have a little favorite group of incoming favorite kindergartners for the summer, at least till they're all here, the Metco kids coming out for the first time. This is a standing set of summer school programs. I know a lot of districts are expanding programming because of the pandemic. Our approach was to essentially go with the structures that we've had, but to look at eligibility with a little bit different lens. And so, that, that's reflected here, especially with the elementary kids falling out or below benchmark in reading. We were, we moved the threshold this year to qualify kids who could be invited. And we've just given you a high level view of the numbers of kids as of the day of the memo on the 19th. These are still evolving. Summer school is running July 5th for three weeks at Willard this year because Alcott's offline for the ERU replacements. We're all staffed and very organized, thanks to our coordinator and the work of Kristin Herbert and Ruth Grube, Ruby, and I think we're well set up for success. So, we'll keep you posted as it evolves and bring you updates as the programs play out.
Lori, quick question. It starts July 5th, which might be a rather low attendance day.
Yeah.
And I, and I noticed compared to previous years where we try to eke out 19 or 20 days, we've got something less than that this year, and it's also starting later than it has historically. Was that all by design or necessity? What, how'd that come, do we know?
Right. I do. We, we actually spent the last few years reviewing and trying different configurations of dates and numbers of weeks. We actually found we're getting a better response for fewer weeks than over, we had five weeks, and it was just harder to, people couldn't commit for five because of vacations and other things. We're finding we're getting a better response for three. We debated a lot about the 5th of July, and still even this morning, we're sort of juggling the logistics of that. Some of that is also driven by we want to get out of Willard in time for them to thoroughly clean and set up for school. So, if we'd waited another week to run the three weeks, and we wanted full weeks, we didn't want to trim the fifth day, we, we decided to opt into it. I don't think we've heard that it's a, a non-starter. We're certainly flexible. Families have said they can't be there on the 5th, and they're coming on the 6th, but it doesn't seem to have had a major, major impact. So, you're right, we're always reviewing the data and the, the responses we get and trying to find that best spot.
I'm delighted we're back at Willard. We were at Willard many, many years ago because it was the only elementary in town that had air conditioning.
Oh.
Only in its library, but it made Willard a very attractive place for summer school.
I bet. And I'll just add that Concord Recreation normally runs its additional extended day. With Alcott over at Hunt, they're going to actually move into Willard and keep kids there. And we, I should mention, we have high school kids in programs, both at Ripley and CCH, CCHS. Those are mostly special education programs. So, it's a hopping place even in the summer.
Eva?
Eva.
Thank you. You actually started answering my question, Lori. So, for high school, we have a special education students. Are there any students identified that from the general education tier to support kids that, that will be coming over the summer? Is there any interest of, of those students to come in? And also, are we looking at bridging skills or are we looking at maintaining the, the current level of?
Right.
Knowledge?
Right. So, special education's defined as preventing regression. So, that's the focus there. We tend to come at it the same way typically for regular education. And admittedly, there might be a few differences this year in just trying to see if there's any kids we can support that COVID had more detrimental impact than others. We're grateful that those are, are few and far between in general because our kids were, were in school five days a week, especially at the lower grades. Our vision, Eva, is to create middle and high school general ed programming for summer. Right now, it really is completely focused on special education. So, that's on the to-do list for '21, '22, especially now that RTI is up and running and that this, the data process to identify those kids is all in place. I think the foundations are there to be able to look at what we can offer in the summer. Good, good question.
I have a few questions if I may have the floor for a few minutes. Dr. Hunter, so, thank you. I'm grateful that we are able to, to offer summer school, and thank you for our staff who are going to be running these classes and helping our students and helping that prevention of, of regression during the summer and loss of, of learning, which makes, you know, an easier transition back in September. Because that is the objective of summer school, I would rather we stay closer to the five weeks in the future than farther from the five weeks, because we're talking about preventing regression. So, the longer it is and the closer it is to September, I think will be, the, the more helpful it is for our students. So, I, I would like us to get back to, to the five weeks. The, the question, I'm not very clear about this, because the 4th of July is on Sunday, is Ripley open on Monday, or is it a, a federal holiday?
Yep. So, we're having this discussion even this morning and looking at it. For the 12-month employees, we're going to be considering this, the holiday on the 2nd of July instead of the 4th. There'll be a few people that won't fall exactly into that, but we're processing all of that for sure. It definitely was a tricky calendar to work with. So, you're right to ask. Yep.
Thank you. And, and I don't need a specific answer for, for this question, but I'm curious whether there's an increase in number of attendance this summer because we have reached out to more students because of the pandemic. Do you have a sense of an increase in, in attendance this summer?
I only know it anecdotally. I haven't looked year to year. We've seen a bit of increase, but not exponentially. I, I think our suspicion is people need a break, including the kids. But we'll bring you that data. We can do year-to-year comparisons for you at one of our upcoming meetings. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All I have. Thank you.
Lori, the, is this the state money that is going towards or the federal money that is paying for this summit program?
So, right now, Jared, feel free to hop in here at any point. We're working initially within, we have, we have operational funds every year allocated to summer school because it's a, a typical program for us. We're going to look at what, what overages we might have, and we can consider the COVID money for that. So, that's where we are right now. We'll know more once the totals are all firmed up. Anything else?
No, there are no other questions than Jared. Thank you, Lori. We can go to the budget surplus conversation.
Okay, I can, I can show the screen or I can just sort of summarize. What is it? Whatever's easiest. So, why don't I just start with a summary? So, I was able to really put some pen to paper since last Tuesday. We really went through pretty much every single line. While it's fairly, well, it's not too early to come up with a number, but like I said in a few other meetings with this year having a lot of grants, it was, it was a little harder than in years past, but I feel comfortable with these numbers. So, let me, let me run through them. So, just so you have sort of a, sort of an understanding. So, in the memo, which was done really last week, I took the data from the 21st. On the 21st, we had just over 7 million in encumbrances. That's, you know, health insurance, that's encumbered, utilities, all the, all the payroll, et cetera. We had an unencumbered balance, and this is all general fund. We had an unencumbered balance of $1,573,000. Included in that unenc- included in the encumbered balance, because this is important to point out, is the $368,000 for, for the 370 MacBooks for the freshman class. If that was not encumbered, then the unencumbered, if that was not encumbered, then that would obviously drive up the available balance.
Jared, can I just add a little to that? Just a reminder, we prepaid last year. It's encumbered. That doesn't mean we've actually spent anything yet, so it's your decision to make. You can do that again, is really the question on the table as part of this list of things Jared's going to go through.
So, I expect the, and this could go up or it could go down, but I feel comfortable saying that the, the, the unencumbered balance could go down about $200,000 to $300,000 for unknown expenses. We even talked as a principal and admin group today that they had some things that they need to get by the end of the year. This is strictly CC right now, but I know that the high school has some, some expenses. Therefore, I'm expecting that to be about $1.3 million in, in a surplus. But included in that 1.3 is we have to fund the E and D for the FY '22 budget as well as, which is $300,000, as well as any revenue for FY '21 that comes in under the budget amount, which we're expecting it to be about $80,000 to $100,000 due to the interest that we budgeted for but did not receive. So, that is the general fund portion, and this all sort of ties together. So, the revolving accounts. So, right now, as you know, there's three, we have many revolving accounts, but a lot of them is really money in, money out, and I don't really even touch those. I manage them, but, you know, adult and a community ed, they oversee that, that, you know, basic, you know, gifts account, principals, principals manage that. And again, we oversee it. So, the, the three that we really, that intertwines the most with the general fund is the food service, the athletics, and then the special ed circuit breaker. So, the athletic revolving account currently, to start the year, we had a $316,000, $317,000 balance, and we expect this year to end around $300,000. Now, that is very justified. I mean, very healthy, but also justified due to the COVID, especially in the fall, our expenses are down. Now, we can keep a relatively high athletic balance, and this can be used for capital athletic items such as a turf field, for instance. The food service account, the food service account, as you know, we've, we've had a very healthy food service account prior to the, prior to COVID. It is self-funding. In FY '20, we did experience a loss. We did plug that hole with the general fund to get it back to a very healthy balance because we didn't know that what we were dealing with this year. The state is offsetting all the, all the lunches, but we are getting little reimbursement back, not what we're used to. We are still funding, we're still paying all of our staff. So, we're expecting, we are expecting a deficit around $100,000 this year. Bryce is still, you know, crunching some numbers, but we expect about $100,000. What we want to do is we want to plug that hole and bring that back up to a healthy balance between four to six months' worth of expenses as a contingency for, for next year. And then, once we are through all the COVID, then, you know, get it back to, you know, three to four months' worth of expenses.
Jared, just a couple of points of clarity. We did not keep all of our staff from a year ago. We did lay some people off as we reopened, especially knowing we were in hybrid and half-day modes, those sort of things. Thankfully, we didn't trim too deep because then when we suddenly were there all day and everybody was back, we were able to still manage it. The biggest differences are, you know, just participation rates are down. The food is completely different than what we were serving pre-COVID. And yes, the federal government is, it's free, but the subsidies are down a bit as well. So, it just, we are not unique at all on this topic. Most districts are, are facing the same situation. So, hopefully next year we start to recuperate.
Jared, forgive me, I may be missing it. Is there a, a guess as to food service revolving balance for June 30th? Will it be in the red or simply depleted and in need of the, the infusion to, to have some months of running room? to have some months of running room to get started?
Correct. No, it will not be depleted. It will, I don't know why I even put that number in there and it's escaping me, but we will have probably over $150,000 in there even after this year.
Okay, so $150,000 and another 100 would bring it up to
Five months' worth of
Give us a half of the fiscal year of running room for the cash flow ins and outs that you manage.
Correct.
Okay. Expectation that we will get out of this pattern?
Yes, if we can serve back to more normal offerings, I definitely expect a very different participation level to return. And with all kids there full-time, it should also make a huge difference.
Yeah, reimbursement rate going up.
Yeah.
I did talk to many colleagues and they're all running in the red.
Yeah.
You know, they're either going to have to plug that with free cash from, let's say, a town side or E and D. So I think it was a really good move that we did offset a lot of our losses last year and get that balance higher than normal.
Would we be providing free lunches to summer school students?
No.
But the reimbursement goes through the summer.
That's true, it does. We'll talk about it. You're right.
I really think we should consider
Yeah, because especially for the kids that stay all day.
Right.
Yep, we'll put it on the list.
Yeah, we've done it before, but it's been sporadic. Any insight as to the anomaly here? That we're looking at federal and state grants, but the state chooses this year to reimburse at a lower level? Seems kind of
No, no, the state is all free lunches for every student right now.
Yeah, federal government.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm seeing the state reimbursement level down, which I'm understanding is a one-year phenomenon.
Yeah. And Ian is on here, and I know he follows this very close. Did they announce, Ian, when that might go back up? Is this just a fiscal year issue or, you know, come September? And he might be hilarious.
So, I'm there, sorry. So it's actually more that they're reimbursing for every lunch, but what they consider to be a fair price of a lunch is kind of lower than what we're used to. So they set, you know, the amount that they're going to give for each lunch, but that's lower than the normal school lunch price that we charge the students.
So that's creating part of the deficit as well.
Our calculation for cost out is more than the state's reimbursement back in.
Correct, yep.
We're not charging anybody for lunch, but we're providing a more expensive lunch than the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So circuit breaker, circuit breaker is a little tricky. So the way that circuit breaker works, as you know, we get our allocation, and you can carry over that allocation into the next year, but for the next year, you have to spend at least that. So if you get $1 million one year, you can carry $1 million over to the next year, but you at least have to spend what you carried over. Because we are keeping more kids in district, our circuit breaker expenses are less than they were in years past. Therefore, we received $872,000 in FY21, but we carried over $1,065,000. So the maximum that we can carry over next year is $872,000. At this time, we have $1,444,000 in that circuit breaker reimbursement, which is $571,000 more than we can carry over. This number probably will go down a little bit, but we've identified about approximately $450,000 worth of tuitions for FY22 that we can prepay. And if there's any, so if we decide to do that, which we've done in years past, if there's any amount remaining above that $571, that would go back into the general fund and would be an additional fund surplus.
Jared, can you just remind me which, there's one set of, one kind of school, you can do three months of prepayment and one you can do a full year?
Yeah, so collaborative, you can pay the full year, and then everything else you can pay three months' worth.
Okay.
So we're working on getting invoices. I know that case collaborative, where we send most of our kids, if not all, for the collaboratives, they're going to be setting their rates, I think, on Friday. So we'll work on getting those. But we looked at, we literally looked at every single child, and what we did is we just did an estimate and we felt comfortable with that amount. So that's how those three tie into the general fund. So at this time, again, adding back in the 370 freshman laptops of the 368,000. I'm expecting there to be a surplus of $1,668,502 after covering the excess and deficiency. So that's really after covering the $400,000 because now I'm bringing in the $571 in circuit breaker. Therefore, just giving some recommendations on things that, because we're very limited on what we can prepay. Some of my recommendations are allowing me to prepay the three months' worth of estimated special education tuitions of approximately $450,000, continuing with the $368,000 for the MacBook ears. One of the things that we really thought would be a smart purchase at this time is we're estimating an electric bus for about $350,000. So that is for the region eligible for Chapter 70. So that 70%, which is the number right now, which is a conservative number, it could be higher. We would get 70% spread out, 70% of the total cost over the next five years after it's on the road. So that would essentially pay for all but 30% of it. And then another, and then we were thinking $75,000, that is a very rough estimate, but $75,000 for design costs for the amenities building, which would then allow us to at least say that we have the design if we wanted to go and to get the reduction in the bathrooms, get a waiver for that. Therefore, I'm still projecting, if that was all allowed, a remaining surplus of $425,000. And what we could do is we could do $225,000 to lower the assessments for both towns in FY22, which is essentially returning the money to the towns, and then add $200,000 potentially to start building up our stabilization account for future capital projects.
So these are yours to decide. Jared's just bringing you his first pass at recommendations. There's no urgent, Jared, what kind of timeline are we on, just so we all understand that?
So if we were going to, if we were going to add money to the stabilization account, we would need a vote before June, by June 30th. Also, if we were to reduce assessments, and that's something that, well, we don't have much time because of the town meetings, you can go ahead and reduce those. I think June 6th is too soon for you to make that decision because you could amend on the floor. But we could essentially reduce assessments after the fact. Essentially after the fact. One of the things is you're just not supposed to really end in a surplus. So that's why I would make a recommendation that June 30th at the absolute latest.
Okay.
So you can reduce the assessments after the respective town meetings and before June 30th?
Correct. And that would simply be through E and D for next year.
So just as far as, do we have meetings planned after the 15th?
No.
No. Good question.
Then press on getting this decided before town meeting and actually amend our motion.
That would mean we would have another meeting next.
Means June 8th.
Oh, sorry, that's Carlisle, that's June 6th. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but this is the region, so
All right, yeah.
But you did just call an exec session for next week, so
And/or we could vote before the town meeting.
You could, on a Sunday afternoon.
Community that we are
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because nobody's going to pay attention in July.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Are we doing any private rentals this summer at the high school?
We are, yep.
So I know for very, very, very good reason, we did not dig into the facilities fees, but it is high time that we amend those because I see another year of lost revenue, which we, in my opinion, should definitely go up. They haven't gone up, we haven't revisited this over 10 years.
So Sarah asked if we could put it on the agenda for the 8th, so we're digging up our previous research to see if we can manage that for you.
At this point, I just think we should dig in on this this summer and look to next year to put them in place. It's obviously not the appropriate time to change.
A little rushed.
To that point, I do not think it's equitable to just plan on using the athletic fund to do such a very large project as the turf field. So I think we need to come up, this is my two cents, come at this in a different way. But we can have further discussions and we don't need to decide that this year, and that's not part of this plan. The other thing is, could we just have a little more detail on, 75K is a, doesn't seem like a lot of money, but to me it is. On other approaches, have we definitely confirmed they would not consider the bathrooms at the high school bathrooms for the stadium?
Oh, jumping.
What's that?
Sorry, it's
Keep going.
Go ahead, Cynthia. Yeah, we hear you.
I think that wasn't for you.
No. And I would also like to consider a home rule petition, perhaps, to ask for complete, you know, revocation or to move, you know, not have to, this is a terribly burdensome and crazy plumbing law.
Yes. Yes.
So, you know, I think we should decide really how many, what kind of amenities building would we like? This draconian law, and think about how much that might actually cost. And maybe work with the concrete select board. I'm not sure how these things work on a regional property. If you're asking for a home rule petition, which, I don't know, can it come from a region? I've never investigated.
That's a good question. I don't know.
But I think it's a little good investigation, and I waited five years on this already. It's not like, you know, we can't do another like years' worth of work to potentially save a large amount of money and not have a large structure. I don't think we can afford such a 20-plus bathroom structure on that property in terms of the, you know, permeability and all that sort of thing. So I would like to wait on that 75K personally, and I would prefer to see all the 425K go back to the counts. This is my two cents.
Points well taken. Other questions, comments? Does a, does a stabilization account have to name the projects for which it's intended?
You know, that's a great question. I do not. I talked to Desi many times about this. So no, but it has to be for a capital item. So I'm going to get you that exact language. You can put monies away for capital purposes, but it doesn't, you don't have to say this is specific. Right now, for turf field, you can change your mind. It's not like capital for the towns that goes to town meeting for a specific purpose, but it would have to be used for capital.
Thank you. On the school bus, if we looked at your replacement table, which we haven't looked at in a few months, would it make a compelling case to use the surplus or 350 of the surplus toward that objective?
You would reduce, you would reduce about $30,000, give or take, for next year. Now, we're, we've sort of built now, built it into the general fund, so we do not expect it to go up any years. We feel that the money is now in there for the cycle replacement. So this would, this would save a lease for next year.
Okay, so it'd be in lieu of a lease?
Yep.
Thank you.
And just, obviously, the difference is the lease is on diesel. We don't have another really good pathway to another electric. We're waiting on VW grants and things that are just slow and anyway, so just noting that difference.
Yeah, just following up on that question. Court, you might have others, but just because it's on this topic, is that okay if I follow up? Typically with the lease, I know we're looking at usually doing a couple per district. If this is reimbursed at 70%, which basically, you know, 350, okay, 30% of that, we're talking a bus, an electric bus for 105. My question would be, would they reimburse us for more than that? Could we do two instead of one? Because, you know, if we're going to be buying buses anyway, and the electric can be purchased at basically the same cost, electric is better, right? So would it make sense to do more than one electric bus?
It's an option. I am 100% sure Desi's going to tighten the loophole on this once we've done it once, so
And wants to do it once.
I don't know, maybe you could argue two. I'd be surprised if it doesn't turn into a restriction on coming reimbursements for transportation.
Okay, so anyway, that's my question, and especially if the loophole might tighten, I would, I would maybe recommend to. Okay, sorry, Court, back to you. I'll wait on my other questions.
What is the timeline for getting that reimbursement?
So once it's on the road, which would be next year, the reimbursement would start in FY23.
Okay.
Right, Ian?
And it'd be a five-year spread?
Correct.
The MacBooks, because of the number and therefore the cost, is worth another minute for me. No, none of the computers are moving from one district to another, but you do have computers moving across K8, am I correct? Okay.
Yes.
There was a point in time when we were looking at something upwards of 200 that we weren't sure had exact homes destined for them. Has that all been sorted out?
It has. COVID sort of realigned us pretty quickly, and what we'll be doing is the next year moves forward and we can totally eliminate quarantine options, is weaning out the really dated machines and going to a two-to-one ratio at elementary.
Got it, thank you. Okay. Good. Your list on surplus references the sped tuitions of $450, and that's both collaborative and the three-month payments?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's still an estimate, but we felt comfortable going with that number at this time.
And what are the mechanics for managing the money in the surplus come June 30th? I should know and I don't, forgive me.
So if there's a surplus, so you can, basically, we officially close our books on July 15th, but you can have encumbrances. You have to have, you can have an encumbrance up until July 15th, but you can't get invoiced for anything before June 30th. So as long as we have invoices for things before June 30th, we can keep that encumbrance in what they call accruals. And, you know, you can have something encumbered for a while, but eventually, you know, we close our, we would officially close our books in, you know, usually August, mid-August. So, but if there's a big surplus, I'd want to identify that in the beginning of the summer so we can tell the towns what we're doing.
So in short, you'd encumber it and let us know.
Correct.
Thank you. And the, the E and D is topped out at 5%. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right. And that's going to be done one way or another as one of the first moves that you make.
That will be next.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
So there's really no wiggle room.
So should I be asking whether we can get four members of the regional committee to the Carlisle Town Meeting? Is that where we were potentially going?
Why? We don't need a.
What? Can we still?
We would vote in an open session prior to the next.
Okay, fine. All right. I was just asking if there's any, any prospect of a need for a vote immediately prior to the June 6th meeting, which I assume is outside somewhere.
Yeah, it's outside at the schools.
But we're thinking that's not going to be called for. All right, thank you.
Wait, I'm confused now because I introduced this. So we will not have a regional meeting before June 6th, correct?
At the present time, no. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
Unless we have a vote before our tentative exec session at 6:30 next Tuesday.
Right.
Logically, that seems like a better approach.
If we're having an exec session, we could do a very short meeting attached to it. When we open up the exec set, when we open up the meeting before going into exec, we have one order of business.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's a slippery slope though, because once we put one there, others follow. Yeah.
It sounds like it's timely and we should.
I think it's a good, I think that's.
Sounds like the plan. Okay, good. Thank you.
Can I make a couple? Oh, are you done, Court, or no?
Only by way of saying, Jared, I'm very fond of these clear memos. Wonderful way to share information with us. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought I was on mute and it was 15 minutes of them jumping. So sorry.
You're in your own home. We understand.
We understand.
We get it. I just had a couple of quick ones, comments slash questions. The first is, I just want to acknowledge and thank because this is good news. I mean, and, and point out Jared gave credit to grants that we got, but there's also a new mindset in this district of really saving and spending wisely. And yes, we were budgeting in an uncertain time, but the fact that we actually have a surplus this year, I think, is pretty incredible. So I just want to say that out loud and acknowledge it, that it's, that it's because of really great savings gone on all year. So thank you. So the second one, I want to return to what Cynthia said about potentially returning it all back to the town. Because I, well, no, no, and I'm not debating it. I actually, I agree and I really like that idea. But then on the flip side of it, I also want to think about the responsibilities of putting into something into a stabilization account. So I would very much be in favor of, you know, kind of doing whatever the town would see as more responsible, right? Is that to return money back to help fund next year, which might be the thing? Or could the town look at us and say, but wait a second, there is going to be a turf that's going to need to be funded at some point and we don't want you, you know, you to hit us up for, for 10 million at once or whatever it is. So, so it would be more responsible to put more money into a stabilization fund. And so I guess I would say, I don't know if there's any way that we can get some feedback on that or have we heard feedback? So I just wanted to kind of throw that out to bounce around a little.
So Heather, it's the same pot of money.
True.
And we cannot earmark it. And I know you very well remember when the school committee wiped out the stabilization fund to pay for those signs, which you voted against, which I looked up. Against it, which I, you know, that to me is the perfect example of we should have saved that money for a rainy day and not for those signs.
I, I agree with you there.
So I really think we do, I agree with you. We need to get our act together regarding the turf field. And I think it needs to be a multi-prime approach. But, you know, I do think that's on us and we need to figure out either via fees, maybe even at our next town meeting, setting up a fund specific to that, which is what we do have at the town to do the Doug Whitefields. So I just think it's too, we can't control the way we spend that money. The citizens can't control the way that money is spent. It's purely on the school committee. It does not come to town meeting.
Interesting. Okay. So, again.
We should have put these adjacent to each other. We did, Jared updated the capital topics here. We're, he came up with a number of 400,000 or so for the turf. So that's now on your list. The rest is similar to what you've already looked at, but we did add that to the master list. It's further down in the agenda.
Okay.
We were thinking three to five years. We were pleasantly surprised with that number.
Okay, great. Good. So that's something that we worked on. Okay, just wanted that kind of concept to be on the radar also. And only one other question, which would be, were there things on your list, Jared, that you eliminated before presenting them in this memo? What?
No.
Do you feel like you've covered everything?
We're really so limited on what we can purchase.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Feel like we've covered everything. Okay, good. That's great. Perfect. This is great. Thank you. Okay, so we will continue this next week or conclude this next week. You know, better. Yes. Include some things. All right. So Fatima, new business, some policies.
Yes, thank you. Policy. So the policy subcommittee met on April 28th. And there aren't any major changes that we're bringing for the first reading and discussion. So the first policies don't have any changes. JJ, the, so yes, we don't have any proposed language for the first three. Just to remove JJE only because it's, no, we're removing JJ dash E because the, our MAC representative and instructor realized that it was just a duplication of JJE and suggested to remove it from the books. And I think we, we agreed on that.
The. I have a quick question.
Yes.
Aren't these second readings? We reviewed all these together already.
No, I think they were on the agenda and we didn't. We chose not to.
Did, because like, for example, I know JJE in our notes.
Well, we have the minutes today. Can we go back to the minutes?
I mean, I have in my notes, I mean, Court doesn't like this particular sentence and then we revised these in our April meeting.
And now they're coming back for the second.
This is our second reading. Oh, okay.
Because you revised them. I mean, you could consider it the second, but we were thinking they needed to get that.
That's fine. Got it. In their new iterations.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
It's first reading dash A.
There we go.
Reading of the second version.
Got it. New versions. Perfect.
Yes, so we're still, it's a sub, sub discussion.
Too confusing.
We're getting the hang of it, Alexa, as you said it in your own words.
Nay, Fatima.
Okay, so there's no major change there. The others, we cleaned up the language really. It's more grammatical than anything and we'll go over, over on JJE. So what are we proposing in JJE is just really specifying building principle as opposed to just principle. And then we added the reference. We are, yeah, so we added KAH as a reference. And then MGL 4453.
In JJE, there was also significant changes to the first sentence.
Right.
But that was, you know, again.
Yes, which Court is uncomfortable with. Yes, that's correct, Alexa. Thank you. So Court had expressed concern with what that first sentence might imply that we can't afford to pay what we're raising money for. So we changed that. So Alexa suggested a new language that would read, "School groups may engage in fundraising activities to be used for items slash activities which will benefit the schools but are not funded in the regular school budget." This does not imply that they're not funded because we can't afford it. They just don't belong in the budget. So I, we would like to get your thoughts if you are more comfortable, Court, with that language in terms of, again, what it represents.
Yeah, I think we're being very precise about the words, but you got, you got my meaning. Thank you, Fatima, that this school committee and this administration is going to see to it that anything that should be in the budget is in the budget.
So that's for that. Thank you for the correction, Alexa. JJIB, interscholastic athletics. What are we doing there? I think we have two options of language. We debated and we are bringing it to you to really choose the language. It's not major, then mostly grammatical. So the first option here, let's see. Option one, given that student athletes participate in away games, the superintendent will establish regulations to ensure the safety and well-being of students and staff when participating in such away games. Option two for that sentence is, "Students and staff must abide by the rules and regulations established by the superintendent at away games." So those are the two options for us to choose from, to replace the old language, which is awkward, I think. We can discuss it now or I can move to the last one if you'd like.
It is the last one.
That is right. That's the last one?
I think, I think that's the last one. The, the first sentence seems to read in a more traditional way. Is there a difference between the two of substance in terms of your, your accountability and authority, Dr. Hunter? I'm seeing none, but I don't know.
I don't, no, not that we saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Alexa, you can speak to the options if you'd like. I have a thought, but.
You know, I'm looking at my notes. I mean, I, I wrote them both, so I liked them both. And I, I obviously thought the second was more succinct, however, and I don't exactly remember why. I do remember Dorothy Presser expressing preference for the first one. And again, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't specifically remember why and I apologize for that.
The, what the first one does is it states very clearly purpose and intent, safety and well-being.
Yes.
It does do that.
Yep. Okay. And perhaps that actually was exactly why.
Yeah.
Again.
And that's pretty broad.
And it, and it keeps the superintendent making the, more actively making the.
Right.
The safety, you know, the plan.
More deliberate, I think, would be a word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that the superintendent doesn't make regulation just because, you know, just for the fun of it, right? It's a purpose. So, yeah, I, I agree with the precision of option one.
Great, option one it is.
Great.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sarah, these will come back in two weeks.
Two weeks, so then June 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. Filtering software, old business.
So do you want me to just jump in?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we've just repeated the memo you had. Peter's on the call, so he's here as a resource. Peter, maybe it would be helpful if you just remind them what their decision, what their options are.
Welcome, Peter.
Oh, you're on mute.
There you go.
Thanks.
All right. How many times do we have to do that? Yeah, thanks, everybody. So when we talked about it last time, I think we had divided it into two possible sections here. The first part was, what could we do now? And with our mobile device management software on the laptop, the hardware itself, Cynthia had given some examples of how you might control applications that you don't want to run and that sort of thing. And that we can already do. So that's, exists with our abilities and no problem there. The bigger issue, I think, that was offered discussion was filtering at home. So for that, we would need a third-party piece of software. Plenty of great choices out there, so that's not an issue. And executing on any vision that you have for this is not an issue at all. There is a cost involved. So if you're looking, we surveyed the market a little bit and sort of the average is about $4 to $5 per device is what we came up with. So if you were to do, deal with middle and high school student devices at home, you're looking at additional 10,000 to 12,000 per year to make that happen. So those are the two different sections. I think, again, what we control on the application side of the laptop, that's exists already. This conversation really comes down to what would you like to have happen in the home as far as filtering, similar to a firewall that we might run in the district.
So I just have a thought, and I know it's a regional meeting, but I thought rolling this out district-wide might be premature. Yeah. Let's say six through 12 might be a little premature. And I thought maybe if we did a pilot with one of the middle school grades, maybe seventh or something, or you, you know, have worked with the building leaders, teachers to maybe have that conversation and pick a class and pilot it perhaps, so we don't make a huge investment in licenses and decide, oh, this didn't turn out to be the greatest solution. And that's just a suggestion. Maybe work with the vendor to say, you know, it's a pilot. And we're just going to see what goes.
Is it possible to look at the feedback on that specific software, whether, I'm sure it was tested in other districts and see how it worked? Because I like the idea of a pilot to, to be more fiscally conservative. I also worry about time lost for our students. So I would like, I would like this to start for everyone as soon as possible because I still think of it as a serious crisis. So for me, I would rather not wait to, to protect ourselves from, again, wasting money in something that doesn't work. I would like us to explore with the vendor how that software was used and what was the feedback from our other clients. And the 10,000 to 12,000 dollars, for me, I look at it as part of our technology, once we approve it. It, it will be an inherent part of our technology budget. I don't look, I don't want to look at it as extra because it is going to help enhance the, the, the benefits of using our, our technology. So for me, it has to come with it and I'm not looking at it as, as additional and I hope that others will as well.
I would say for vendor feedback, I think what you would find that it would all be fairly similar. They approach it more or less the same way and maybe some have more bells and whistles than others. So I think from our standpoint, we look at it from this, of what, let's define what we're trying to do first and that will help us settle on, you know, maybe we don't need this vendor who has X, Y, and Z because we're not really interested in that. So we can, I think, define better where we're going with it. Then we can certainly talk to a handful of vendors and, you know, a pilot, I'm sure they'd all be open to it.
So we've, we've heard a desire for a pilot. We've heard a desire for a, the quick implementation. Let's go back to pilot for a minute. What kind of time would be required? And what would Peter, you do and others do to set criteria for that evaluation of the pilot experience?
As far as our ability to implement quickly, we have that because of our MGM MoZoL. And so it's a mobile device management software. So whatever decision we made on a, on a product to try, we would push out that application to the student devices while they're in school and it would download and we install it. So that standpoint, we don't need to collect the devices to start a pilot. So that standpoint, we don't need to collect the devices to start a pilot in that way. Um, again, feedback, I, I think in general, if you look at the companies that do this, um, they really are very similar, and you're going to get similar feedback when you do, um, blocking by category. So there's no doubt that you will run into that you stepped on the toes of teaching and learning in some cases where a website was blocked that shouldn't have been. So that's a part of the, the process is whitelisting things that accidentally get caught up in the filtering. We do that internally with our own firewall as well. So that's a normal process.
You build your exception list.
Correct.
But I'll speak from experience. It's one thing to have the kids in the building and call the IT department between eight and whatever and say, can you let this site through? It's another thing for a kid to, you know, have a problem on Sunday at 10:00 PM where they can't finish a project, which arguably they put off till Sunday at 10:00 PM. But now we have this problem where they can't reach IT, I would hope, can't reach IT. Uh, so that's.
Saturday at 9:00 AM if they didn't.
So that's just the challenge of this, um, so that you don't, I, I just get concerned living this every day with rolling it out to the all six through 12 graders, um, at the beginning of the year. I just, I think we need to figure out a way to ease into it a little bit and see what the repercussions of it are. Because either you have it very open and then you don't really achieve your goals, or you have it very closed and you're constantly trying to adjust to legitimate websites.
I, I would agree with that. That's.
Is there a way to, um, offer it, like, if, if fam, if we, if we pilot it in one grade, but then there are other families that want to adopt it? I mean, if right now we're, we're approving certain apps, is there a way for a family to activate this app on their, on their children's devices?
I would say that the family, the families can have their own device if they want their kids to be, be able to chat on the computer. That could be done on the, uh, I think, uh, on the computer that's not supplied by the school because the school.
I think Sarah's asking about opting in.
I might asking about opting in rather than defaulting everybody in to begin with. Is there, if, if people feel a pressing need to, to try it, like, can you opt in on, on a device on request?
All right. Thank you. Yes, yes.
Well, from our standpoint, it's just having the number of licenses you need and then knowing who to push that out to. So from a technical standpoint, it's not difficult.
And your MDM can push out to specific subsets of machines on your network.
It can.
Cool.
Can I ask a question? So presently, when the kids are in school, are, we have software in place that prohibits them from what?
So internally, we run a firewall that does everything that you're thinking about you'd like to have, um, happen at home. So all of content filtering happens internally. We, um, we're HIPAA compliant, we're everything. And, and this is sort of, I think Cynthia's point, when, when you roll it out and you do blocking by category, you're gonna run into, um, things being caught up into certain categories that you don't want.
No, I get that. Like, but like, so for example, I know anecdotally, there's pervasive chatting on something on the computer at the middle and high school. How are the kids doing that?
Well, unfortunately, there's endless opportunities for that.
Okay.
Um, and applications. When you get specific and you say, we'd like this application blocked, we can do that. So I think.
By category, for example, we do not presently block chatting apps.
So two different categories, I think, and two different topics. So the web filtering is more the global, you're on the internet and you're going wherever you're going. The actual machine and the applications that run on it, we already have the ability to turn, control those, turn those off if that's the request. So there are two different things with, you know, the one that exists is great. It's already there. We can, you know, whatever policy or whatever guidance that we want to put forward, we can take care of that. The real issue is web filtering, um, you know, the internet and the broader.
That's really what we're talking about, blocking specific sites.
Right.
And, uh, I, 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 I think I, I would like to make a suggestion to your, um, concern, Cynthia, on, uh, the, the filtering software if a student has a, um, difficulty or technical issue on a Sunday night, and hopefully they cannot reach IT. And, um, I would like for us, I know it, it might be also too much to ask, uh, since we're piloting, uh, to have a little bit of patience and flexibility from the schools, from the teacher to whom that project is due. Uh, if it can, if the delay can be tied to this technical problem, then maybe they get an extra day or, um, I know it's too much to put on, on a teacher's plate or administrator's plate, but that could be an option to explore. Again, just because it's a pilot, everybody, uh, it helps if everybody pitches in, in their own capacity.
And are we really just considering this because these are our machines in the district? Again, I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm talking through this, something I hadn't thought of, like, I don't know, are we asking too much of the district? Like, you know, we're policing at home, now we're policing at school. I don't like that word policing, but again, I'm just sort of thinking at it at first pass. I just feel bad sometimes about what we are asking of the district. Is it too much?
I think it's a good question, but, but, uh, if I have a child at home and I furnish that child with a machine, I'm, uh, uh, I, I, I'm going to make decisions about what is appropriate and not appropriate for a minor. Um, the, the district has that same, uh, responsibility for a child when they're temporarily in our care. And you can argue they're in our care when they have our machine in their hands. So to your question, I think that is why we're, we're debating this.
Yeah.
It is on us because it's our device.
Yeah.
And I agree along those lines. It's a responsibility. Yes. Like you said, Alexa, we own these devices. We're sending them at home. We're not really giving an option to do, uh, to work without the technology or that is easily accessible. Uh, so it's really taking responsibility, and it is something that, again, I go back to call a crisis because we're talking about addiction. There's screen addiction, there's internet addiction. Uh, so that's why I don't take this lightly. Uh, it's, it's a responsibility that we have as the suppliers of these devices, as the ones who decided that these part of, these are, uh, an integral part of our instruction.
And I, I would add to that, Fatima. Um, of greater concern to me is not, uh, people's habits. Um, although that is a problem in and of itself, but rather harm done by specific content. I think that is in our domain. To me, that's the centerpiece of this conversation. Could, can we reduce the potential for harm, uh, around content? I, I, although I don't disagree with you, uh, habitual use of anything is probably not a healthy thing.
Yeah. And then, you know, add to that mix the, um, again, as I mentioned in the past, the data mining and the selling of data of our children to advertisers and, you know, teaching inadvertently consumerism. Um, I, that's another major concern for me.
Um, Dr. Hunter, were we to move ahead with, uh, a pilot for the purpose of uh, additional management in our machines when they're not going through our firewall, which I believe essentially is the question here. What would you, uh, require from a school committee? A vote in two weeks for an allocation of resources and direction on this as to the magnitude of a pilot?
I would think, and Peter, feel free to chime in, as we recollect the laptops and get set up for the fall, we're going to need to configure whatever you all decide. So I would think we'd want the summer, the entirety of the summer to do that. We'll also have some communication to do with staff and families.
Yeah, I'd like to have feedback from, you know, one of the building heads. But if we're, we're thinking about CMS, I'd like to hear from the administrative team and see what they think, you know? Is this, um, is this a plus for them or, uh? I, I, I need feedback from, they're the people who live with the students and families.
Mm hmm.
You know, they're the closest, not me.
Right.
I think that's a great idea. I agree. I would second Cynthia in that, but I would love to hear feedback from.
They, they'll all be here with us June eighth, won't they?
Yes, they will. Okay. Uh, Dr. Hunter, please do include feedback from challenge success once again for the third time tonight from both CMS and the high school.
And just one, I don't want to drag this on too long, um, because I, I know we should move on, but just quickly, and I'm not sure if this is for Peter or Lori, but how does this, it, does this fit into the big picture? I want to make sure that we're not kind of asking you to do something that's, you know, I, I guess often left field from the, from any other direction. Just want to make sure it fits in.
Peter, it's, does it, how much extra is it for you from what?
Yeah, no. I mean, the timing over the summer, um, we haven't had the laptop since, since pre-COVID. So we're going to go through everything, reimage all the machines. So I mean, the timing works well as far as, um, establishing this and testing it out ourselves over the summer as we, we, um, install on some of the devices. Yeah.
And, and I'm actually, we're talking kind of, does it fit into big picture strategic vision?
Well, you know, one of our, one of the threads of our strategic vision certainly is digital literacy. So I'm always trying to find that balance between what we just restrict kids from and what we teach them for their own independent skills and use of technology. And it's an ongoing discussion of what that balance looks like, of course. So yes, I think complemented by the struggles we all have on how to balance technology and the use and the screen time and our own habits and distractions and all of that. I don't think it's one or the other.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Excuse me, I, I, Eva, just a follow-up for Dr. Hunter said. Uh, so thank you for bringing that very important role, yes, uh, point. Um, so we have digital literacy. I would like for us to, again, our educators, our technology experts, to devote some time to, uh, to audit this area of our education. How are we doing? Uh, how is our lit, the digital literacy, uh, thing? Has it worked or not? How effective has it been? And how much of it do we have? I know we have the, the class at the beginning of sixth grade before we hand out the, the laptops. But then the rest of the time, um, I don't think there's any structure. Can we fold it in into the health class or every core subject? Uh, I, I would like a comprehensive plan on how we are teaching digital literacy. Uh, because I'm not sure that what we have been, whether what we have been doing so far has worked in terms of teaching our children. Yes, they have to, I, I agree with you that they have to teach it. It's part of their world, uh, to learn it. But, um, has it been effective or can we, or do we need to do something, uh, differently? So I would like to see something comprehensive there.
I, uh, I had a question for, uh, for Peter. Um, is there a way of, um, uh, finding out what is the amount of time spent on different, um, in different, uh, by the student in different areas, by parents or by the school to sort of see how they are using different, um, the, whether there are different apps or, uh, where they're spending most of the time? Uh, and that goes into the questions that Fatima has been bringing up, um, of that digital literacy, how useful, you know, our technology is on our daily basis in the, uh, life of our kids. Um, and also, uh, have you, uh, and, and it changes year to year, and our kids are getting smarter when it comes to, uh, going around, um, some of those firewalls. Uh, are the teachers at the high school, um, come, uh, uh, is it, um, are you getting, is it a normal occurrence to get feedback from teachers? Hey, can you tweak this? Hey, can you tweak that? Um, seeing my student is, you know, is getting on, uh, a site or is chatting. Uh, how can I ring, ring him? Are you getting those questions from the teacher?
Yeah, actually, those questions I think are less frequent than the ones, can we add sites? Um, you know, we have a very, uh, an enterprise level firewall that's pretty efficient. And for the most part, the requests that will come will be in the verse, like, can you allow this site? Yeah, occasionally you get students who, yes, they get down in the weeds and they discover and exploit. Um, but it's pretty easily patched very quickly on our part. Um, so, uh, your other question was in regard to, um, sorry, we had another question beyond that.
Oh, uh, it, it, kind of like stats, you, you, you look at your iPhone.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think it's, I think you all know this, but it's important to understand that every piece of software, every server that runs, they run logs. It's just how they're designed. It's designed for troubleshooting and there's all, all the data that you probably want is in it. We don't spend time looking at student logs and what they're doing. It's not been a policy here and it's, we're not interested in that. Um, I think historically, when we started one-to-one here, I think as, um, you know, Lori indicated, it was more about, um, you know, the student, respecting the student to a degree, the digital literacy and sort of making sure that they can survive the world outside of our restrictions. So, you know, what that line is, Lori's right, that's always sort of a, a flowing line where you draw, draw that line. But we do, their logs do exist. I mean, if, if that was a request and we wanted to give a general sense of where people went, um, and how they spent time, you can do that. Um, but again, if you're, if, if they're at home at this point, um, and they're on the laptops at their own network, um, not sure the value. I think big picture, if you implement some type of software like this, you can do it, the software itself can be controlled, right? It's going to be really restrictive. And you can sort of shut down the internet in a strong way, or you can have it sort of loose. Here's the clearly things that nobody would want any student to go after, um, and have a, a larger, um, field that they can, they can go to. It, it's a big world. We know that, the internet, and trying to block that, uh, for them entirely is probably not always going to be successful and may not lead to the goals that we want. Um, but we certainly can protect them in a way at home with software like this that doesn't have to be overly restrictive and get, again, get in the way of teaching and learning. Because ultimately, our goal is to support that and, and not, not be an obstacle to what, uh, the educational staff is trying to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are very low-tech solutions for home. I, I just want to bring up, you know, putting a computer with your student working on their laptop in a place where, you know, you're cooking dinner, uh, in a public place in your own home where everyone is passing. It cuts on all that, you know, chatter. And, uh, uh, those, uh, low-cost, uh, low-cost, low-technology solutions work pretty well.
So how about if we're going to revisit this on June eighth? Um, if we still have ongoing questions, maybe we can compile them to sort of get a memo that answers something? I don't know. Um. Or.
I like that idea. Uh, there's one thing that I would like to add to that list, um, to have Dr. Hunter and, uh, Peter Kelly, uh, talk through it and come, maybe finalize this for at least the summer. Um, the idea of the data, I think it will be helpful for us to be part of that audit to, to assess the success of technology. Um, and, um, and also in terms of investment, what some, an area that is worth looking into and auditing is how much money would it save us in, uh, support in special education once we resolve the technology, uh, issue? I, I would be curious to see if children were allowed, who had, uh, more time to just focus on homework and less distraction on internet, will they be getting more work done, more learning, and therefore needing less support? I'm curious about that, and I, I would like that, you know, comprehensive study maybe to, to look at that data. I know this is long-term, but this, this is a start.
I think one of my requests might be that this summer we gather all priorities and put them together and outline them and strategize. So we have pieces of, you know, some direction on what to do when. Um, so my suggestion with Fatima, I'd bring it up as we do workshops and goal-setting for the fall.
That'd be great.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, CCHS Capital. Okay, CCHS Capital, Jared, hi again.
Hi there. All right. So, so all I did was really just revise the memo that you all got last week. And we added, we added the turf on there. Good timing. Somebody just came in. What else did I, I think, I think the turf was the only thing that we added. Ian Reames was able to get a hold of a company. I believe he also obviously talked to Aaron Jarkus. And as I said before, we were very surprised that, that the, the cost we were looking at was around $400,000. I, I thought it was double that. And we expect the life of the existing field to last another three to five years. And that was around the timeframe that I was thinking.
So we really just brought this back to refresh and update a few things you had asked of us last time. We also, Jared did some talking with Russ about just upkeep of the high school in terms of paint and such. And they're all in agreement of leaving that manageable within the operational costs. So I think the good news is you're probably going to be at a 10-year mark before you really have major work to do within the building or to the high school itself. It's this, you know, this list essentially that'll need the focus. The 10-year mark from the opening of the school, which would be like 2025. So we're not foreseeing much before that.
And I would, if the tennis people have a rather large, I think they need to come in.
Yeah, agreed. I will work on that with Aaron.
Because I hate to have them get way in front of us.
No, we won't let them. Although we're very appreciative of the support.
We are very appreciative, but I don't know what to be appreciative of exactly.
Yeah, exactly. I got you.
Yeah, there is the risk that they will take the school committee for granted and we will take them for granted. Neither of which should happen.
No, we'll.
It's very good news though, that they're, they're so committed to it. So on the amenities building, we do have this new piece of homework, what would a home rule petition look like? Which I think is a very valuable idea because we've gone a number of years without 19 toilets and four urinals and 10 sinks down there. And I don't think we've had a complaint yet.
Not that I know of.
So that would be over much to do that, to comply with a standard regulation for a non-standard facility.
Agreed. We'll be working right on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just Jared to clarify, the three, five years left on the turf, that's on Memorial Field?
Yes.
It was only a 10-year lifespan?
That's about what they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then why it got lucky because there was a high lead content in their infill? So they completely replaced that both fields in like three years after they went online.
Oh, right, right. Okay, okay. Thanks for pulling this all together. It's, I mean, it's good to have a view of the, of what's coming over the next five years. It's really helpful.
Questions? We're good? Yep. Great. Onto action items.
So here's the really good news of the night. Drum roll, Jared.
Oh, that's me again. So, yes, let me pull that back up. So we're expecting, well, we are, we're refinancing the remaining portion of the high school debt. And we, which goes through 2038 and through some refinancing, we expect to have a savings of about 3.1 million. I wish I could explain everything and how that really worked, but very excited to, to bring that to you. Ian Reames and the bank is, we've been working with them for a month now and it's been amazing. So the, the vote is, so we need a vote from you all tonight. And then Ian, the next steps I want to say is, is it tomorrow? I think it is tomorrow or is it the 27th?
Sorry. So the next steps would be, we're going to need wet signatures.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow it would be ideal. And then after that, the refunding will actually, it's going to be dated June 1st. So that's going to be the date that these, these bonds become refunded and we get the lower interest rate and we get to start seeing savings. So.
It's great news.
This is awesome. This is huge. I mean, a reason to celebrate.
It's in the ballpark. It's, it's going to fluctuate a year, but the savings is about $200,000 a year. And that kind of goes up and down over time, but it's about $200,000 a year. So.
And did you say you need signatures? And we've been working with Sarah, so Sarah's going to be coming in to sign it tomorrow.
Lock it in, right? Now.
The only thing, the select, the select board just went through a similar exercise for refinancing a bond or bonds. But they had to read the entire thing.
They had to what?
Entire thing.
For the vote? Oh, the entire, the entire vote as?
Yes.
Oh.
Should have been more clear. I was, I think I was expecting that.
I was expecting to accept the bond reoffering vote as presented.
I just, I was present for that long.
Okay.
Things. Wow. I don't know what the rule is. I just, that was surprising to me.
Even, even listing all those numbers?
I think you can say as stated on that. But I think, and we, we actually didn't get clear, I guess, very clear expectations on this. But I, I was actually expecting pretty much it to be fully read.
All right. I'm in. Ready?
Let's get started.
Heather.
Unless somebody else wants to. Okay, here goes. I move for the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to accept the bond reoffering votes as presented. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or a portion of the district's $32,500,000 general obligation school bonds dated June 1st, 2013, maturing on June 15 in the years 2022 through 2038, inclusive the refunded bonds. And that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted, the sale of the $19,165,000 general obligation school refunding bonds of the district dated June 1st, 2021, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $21,581,275.76 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on June 15th of the years and in the principal amounts and their interest at the respective rates as followed. Rates according to the memo from Jared Stanton of May 25th, 2021. Further voted that in connection with the marketing sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 12, 2021, and a final official statement dated May 19, 2021, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the district treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the district upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the district treasurer and the members of the committee be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the district, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the district treasurer and bond council deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same delivery of an executed counterpart or of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmissions shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. One more. Further voted that each member of the committee, the district secretary and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second.
Second.
Court, you got off easy there. Discussion. Well, Heather.
This is great.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll take my bow. That was my performance for the night.
Since you're leaving, we're getting the most out of you.
That's right.
I'll vote Anderson, I for both.
Uh, this is a region.
Oh, it's regional. Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Out, I.
Is that I?
Mostafi, I for region.
Raini, I.
Wilson, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jared. That is awesome.
Yeah, that was well, time well spent, literally.
It wasn't clear. Sorry. We have been in touch with members of Carlisle and Concord regarding this.
Yeah, they were CC'd on the, on the memo too.
Good. Thank you.
This isn't the first time they're saying it.
Heather didn't include who was CC'd. Okay, so now we have the vote to approve the revised 2021, 2022 calendar. However.
We were trying, you want me to weigh in a little here on where we're at with this?
Yeah.
We're trying, a number of us have reached out to some feedback from Concord on how they're going to present the Indigenous Peoples' Proclamation on written versions of the calendar. And we have not received a response in time for tonight, unless, Court, you did. I have not.
Uh, what I, what I've learned is that the town, through the town clerk's office and through HR, which would be most responsible of all the town departments for issuing any naming of days and dates, have not taken any action. So this really stands on the Concord Town Government side at the point where the select board have issued the proclamation, which I believe leaves us free to do as we, as we wish, as we intend, without asking how do we sync up with the town? Quite simply. Not that the town's decision on a calendar would dictate our calendar or vice versa, but we wanted to know what the right hand and the left hand were doing. So in this case, I think we can move independently. And if the chair of the region will entertain a motion, I would move that we, for purposes of the school calendars for both districts, co-name the second Monday in October. Help me out here. Second Monday in October.
Second Monday.
Both Columbus Day and now Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Is there a second? Second. I'll second that. Okay. Discussion?
I think in this way we maintain some cherished traditions, notwithstanding the fact that in some quarters they're controversial and that we bring on the, the honoring of the role of Indigenous peoples on this continent with the, the co-naming.
Yeah, and I think the co-naming, it gives, it prompts conversation, right? It prompts a reflection on our, on our histories. So, yeah. Okay. Roll call?
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both.
About I for both.
Is that I for both?
Mostafi for region.
Raini, I for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you. Onto the vote to approve the CCHS exchange student. I have mentioned, I'm going to just put a disclaimer out there to start. I have mentioned that I have hosted a direct placement student such as this one, who is the daughter of a dear friend of ours, came and lived with us for a year, attended CCHS. As such, one of my friends, neighbors and co-Carlisle Education Foundation board members asked of some, some help in, in understanding what to do and also if I would be their letter of reference for their application to host a student. So since I served as their letter of reference, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, but you still preside.
Okay. I can still ask for a motion to, to move.
Or I can if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
How about this? So you can actually recuse yourself if you want. Could we have a motion? Let me, whoops, I lost it. I was going to read it. Could I have a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve one Greenheart exchange student from Spain at CCHS for the upcoming school year 2021, 2022?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Is Greenheart the name of the school?
The agency.
It's the agency. Okay. Thank you. Is this an agency we've worked with in the past?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Excellent.
I just want to comment, I'm very happy that we're supporting things like this. I think any type of cultural exchanges, this direction, that direction are so, so important and fulfilling for kids. So.
Yeah, here, here.
I'm happy to support this.
Agreed.
Heather, you want to call for a roll call?
And a roll call?
Anderson, I, I.
About I.
Is that I?
Mostafi, I for region.
Raini, I.
Then it passes unanimously. And I'll hand it back to you, Sarah.
And I will entertain a motion then to adjourn the regional meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Out, I.
Is that I?
Mostafi, I.
Raini, I.
Wilson, I. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Concord School Committee will stay in session. We've got a couple of items, probably brief. The first of which is the old business, the Concord Middle School Building Project and the MSBA Statement of Interest. As is the case each year now, year five, we have a invitation from the Massachusetts School Building Authority to express our statement of interest, should we wish to do so. And I believe there might even be a deadline to this. Am I correct, Dr. Hunter?
Yes, we're, we're due to either resubmit or not and we're looking for guidance on that direction. And we've been turned down four times, as you know, so here we are again.
So I'll offer up, I think it would be largely symbolic because the prospects are, are dim to none. But it can be argued, it's a, a due diligence and a responsible move that simply gives us options without any obligations. That's a few opinions from me. I'd certainly ask for others.
I guess I only, you know, I'm not sure that the cost of doing it. I only want to avoid asking people to spin wheels for, for no real reason if we, if we really think that the chance is so low that we're going to be accepted. So that would be my concern over doing it. But I'm open to, open to thoughts.
This question is for Heather or Dr. Hunter. Since we've done this four times already, how much, how involved is the reapplying? How much time are we talking?
It's not much. Jared, you want to be more specific? It's not much, Jared, you wanna be more specific?
Yeah, it's a lot of paperwork that's already been filled out four or five times, so we cut and paste it, so I can't take credit for a lot of work that has to be done.
Yes, and, uh, I agree with, um, with, uh, the points that, uh, Court mentioned, and I think, yes, for, uh, yes, the, I think we owe it to our, um, taxpayers to make an effort to find ways to, um, save money, and although the prospects, yes, of us being chosen are dim because there's so much need in, in the state, but I think we, uh, we owe it to our taxpayers to reapply.
Lori, I forget the answers to this question. Are there any, um, are there any ways in which this could hinder the timeline set forth by the building committee? If we're turned down, no. If we're accepted, it's definitely going to impact the timeline, because we would not, we'd only be able to use what we've done so far as informational, we'd be going all the way back to selecting OPM and designers with MSBA. But we also could turn down, we don't, if we are accepted, we have to elect it, it's right.
What we would, what we would do, if I may, uh, Lori, I think what we would do were we accepted is, uh, recalculate costs, uh, recalculate, um, uh, the time lost, uh, try to quantify what that means for, uh, kids in the district to, uh, push this off. It would be a difficult calculus, but it'd be one we would have to do.
And the other thing too is, I forget, I forget the answer to this question. Do you feel that with the restrictions put forth by the MSBA, there would be difficulty in creating a building that would meet the educational plans in the way we anticipate that the current building will allow for?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
You'd definitely be having discussion of what the community would fund without. Right. It's, it's about what's categorized as reimbursable, and I'm sure we'd be having some discussion of what would not be reimbursable.
That we would have the option to supplement whatever we get from the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so basically part of, part of, let's say we took the design that we have now, part of that would be reimbursable by the state. So the math that we would have to do would be starting the clock again, we literally go back to ground zero where we were in summer of 2019, and we'd start the clock again, um, conceive, you know, that we, we won't find out until November if they're on time, so conceivably that next year, kind of a year out now, um, you would start the clock again and you'd look at projected escalation to see how much more the building will cost at that point, and then look at how much we think would be reimbursable.
I'm not talk, I, I'm more.
Sorry, just to finish that one, and then look at whether or not that difference, what we would save by having them reimburse part of it, would it actually be more than the difference that it's gonna increase in that time period? And so that's, like Court said, that's math we would have to do at that point. My guess is they'll start to, those numbers will start to come together, and it might not be a big difference, but that's what we would have to do.
Yeah, the numbers will come together, and the, the more they come together, the more time becomes a factor, I think.
Right.
Do you agree, Heather?
Completely, yeah, the closer they are, you know, if you're, let's say a hundred thousand dollars off an estimate, right, which is almost nothing in a building, and it's gonna be five years later, you're gonna go with the building that's five years sooner for that cost difference, right?
But what we, but what's gonna be difficult to ascertain is, like, like, I, like, I remember there are very specific restrictions that the, like, so for example, the discussions we're having specifically about the auditorium would be entirely off the table because there would be no auditorium. The conversations we're having about the gym would be entirely off the table because there are specific parameters.
So if you look at other building projects around us, they do have auditoriums, which are outside the scope of the MSBA project. They do have gym, bigger gyms, again, outside the scope of the MSBA project.
Right, so it's, the town would have to 100%. Right, okay, but.
So it's just that those aspects, like, aren't reimbursable, so they will look at our plan and say.
But you can do them.
You can, right.
You could do, you could have the MSBA fund, you know, 70% of your building, 65%, I mean, excuse me, you could have 65% of your building within the construct of what the MSBA allows, so you could have 35 not, if the community decides to do that.
And just as we started the current project with no auditorium, we would give MSBA start with no auditorium and then promptly talk about adding one.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 no, I just, I just wanted clarification. Thinking about.
It comes down, it comes down for me to, uh, this may sound silly, but I mean it, it comes down to appearances. Uh, we simply look like we're responsible by, uh, affording Concord citizens all options, but we do it at some risk of confusing our message about our intent to go it alone now and our, our commitment to trying to get this building open in, uh, three years. You know, so.
But I, I, well.
That's the fix we're in.
Yeah. Well, and I did feel like part of the messaging around approving that 1.5 million was messaging around some benefits as to going it alone, so I do feel like that vote could be interpreted as an affirmation of that strategy, and is it, to your point, Court, confusing to then muck that all up?
But even after that vote, we went ahead and did a statement of interest.
Yeah, we applied four times since it was part of the project, I think.
One was since then, or.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not four.
Yeah, but we did apply once since then, it's true.
Yeah. Thank you.
I mean, I feel like on this one, let's just, maybe we take a straw poll or a vote. I mean, where I, I don't see particular value in doing this because I feel like it will be somewhat spinning wheels, but I'm also not tied to it. If everybody feels like it, you know, it seems like the better thing to apply, I'm, I'm flexible, is what I would say.
Well, we do have a vote on our agenda.
Right, so let's vote.
Well, it's not next.
Oh, sorry, we had to get there.
More, any more discussion? Is there a request for a straw poll?
I'd love to hear what everybody's thinking, just to understand.
I think it's a waste of time, but if we're interested in optics and that's important to us, then, you know. I, I don't think our vote will matter either way in the end, but.
So I, I support the submission.
Okay.
I do as well.
I'll, I'll support it, and I, uh, um, uh, at the same time committed to our current course of action, but, uh, if we were approved, it's gonna get our very serious consideration because, uh, state aid for something this significant is, uh, nothing to, uh, take lightly.
Yeah.
Even though the prospects are, are remote.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, so, so once we, if we are approved, we don't, we're not tied to, we don't have to accept it, right?
Right, we could, we could then make the decision whether or not to.
We, we'll have to do the math at that time.
Right.
And the math will be money and time and impact to kids and impact to taxpayers.
Yeah.
And a lot more analysis than we could possibly do tonight, so.
Which is why I'm open to, if we were, if it was binding, so to speak, I would be forced.
Right.
A bad idea, right? But it's not binding, so.
Got it.
No, bottom line is, we've tried to afford our constituents all possible options.
Yep.
Yeah, my, my support in no way is that analysis saying that if we are accepted in, then we have to go with it, I am not saying that in any way, shape or form.
Right.
So.
That's a good clarification.
You know, and I, I would echo that, I.
Yeah.
Think the same way.
Calculus, not addition, subtraction.
Right.
And just point of order, the select board also needs to vote to approve before the submission.
And they're, they are aware that it's on our agenda this evening.
Yes, they are.
Thank you for the reminder, because I forgot.
Okay.
Cool.
All right, let's, uh, move on to the CMS project update. We don't have timeline slides for you, which, uh, I, I regret, I'm sorry, that's my poor preparation, um, but right now we are entering into schematic design, which will encompass most of the summer, uh, and help me out, Heather and Lori and Jared, the September milestone would look like what? I think that was one of our milestones.
Oh, yeah, let's see, jumped to more specific than I was ready to answer. Uh, Lori, you can, I was gonna pull up the, um, the slide with the timeline potentially and share it for you if you want.
Perfect, yeah, that'd be lovely.
Glad you do that.
Hold on, let me work on that.
So while they're pulling that up, uh, the, uh, decision last week by the committee was to authorize the, uh, design team, otherwise known as the architect or SMMA, to, uh, bring forward what she calls focus groups, uh, the principal architect that we're working with, uh, that would, uh, not, uh, replace or supplant our subcommittees, uh, although that was, uh, discussed as a possible outcome, um, but instead would, uh, be a mechanism by which the architect could seek the expert, uh, input from various, uh, subspecialties, uh, to, to do the work necessary for schematic design. It's not a process that requires focus groups, um, but it, uh, is something that, uh, is perhaps gonna make the, the process, uh, uh, more public, more visible. So here we have the, uh, the layout that was presented to the building committee last week, and, uh, what do we have here? Feasibility that is concluding now, schematic design, May through December, uh, with a potential, these are only potentials now, a special town meeting December or March, and then, uh, a, uh, accelerated schedule, um, and additionally accelerated construction, which you can see here, um, in both cases, uh, the town would be in the building in, uh, early to, uh, early to mid 25.
Well, and just to clarify, Court, the difference here, um, in, in both of these, the tentative town, special town meeting is December 10th, um, the big difference is where we have this, the special town election, it could happen right afterwards, which would mean calling a special town election, or it could wait until March, in which case it might be part of the regular town election, is my understanding of the difference there.
Yeah, good point.
And so whether or not we, and, and again, those are decisions yet to be made by the building committee, um, in coordination with the town, obviously, um, as to whether or not the election follows right afterwards, right in December, or is later in March, and that does, so if we wait until March, it pushes the general timeline out by about three months. Uh, but either way, like you said, hoping to get in the building sometime in the 24-25 school year, it's just a matter of is it early in the year versus later in the year.
The next meeting is June 3rd, and there is a public forum on the evening of June 7th. And, uh, Heather will be getting that information out to us.
Yep, it's actually on its way out shortly.
Any questions about this timeline? And we can forward you, uh, the entire set of slides if you wish, although I suspect they're already up on the website. The new website.
On the website, cmsbuildingproject.org.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I, I have some, not about the timeline, but about the focus groups and the lack of use of subcommittees. I, I don't, I, I don't understand, so explain it to me.
Um, the, the way I understand it is that, uh, the architect considered this to be a mechanism by which she and her team could, uh, communicate with selected people or groups that would bring certain kinds of expertise to the process, um, uh, if she wanted, uh, sustainability expertise or expertise about water or drainage or landscaping or fire codes or, help me out here, but really the, the whole range of, uh, inputs that, uh, she would want for schematic design, which will bring a plan to the town with sufficient detail to, uh, enable a more accurate cost estimating, um, and, uh, more, more final decisions on, uh, on, on the building. It, uh, serves in lieu of, I think, what a, what an architectural firm would do independently just by visiting these respective offices. Um, it's, uh, it's, uh, uh, my, my interpretation, Cynthia, is what I said before, is that it, her thinking was this would make it, uh, a more public process. That's the best I can offer.
Well, and wouldn't you.
I agree with everything.
Of those people? So it's just, this is just, isn't, this would just be the process that they would use if you wanted to get, like, a fire code, like you said, you'd have to go to these people anyway, so is this just.
That happens. Project, you don't need a focus group to do.
Yeah, no, nothing precludes anybody from walking into the town engineer's office or the light plant office. We, uh, a concern that, uh, that I had and a couple of members had was, uh, was this intended to circumvent or abandon some or all of our subcommittees? Um, and that was questioned a number of times, wasn't really answered. So the subcommittees, uh, do remain, finance, leadership, sustainability, design, public relations, um, but have been effectively relegated to, uh, a somewhat lesser role during schematic design as these focus groups, uh, become dominant.
Um, also, I, I would just, and I agree with Court's whole summary, um, that he gave to kick this off here, um, the only thing I would add is that, as opposed to just being a recommendation of our architect, he's referring to Kristin Olson there, um, my understanding was that it's not just her recommendation of how we should run this project, but the, but the SMMA team, as well as the Hill International team, our OPM, who is there to help us manage this, all said, this is how schematic design works, you know, so they were kind of presenting, this is how a project is run, and in this stage in schematic design, we use some focus groups to get some information on specific things from specific groups of people, um, and, and we, you know, it's a lot of information gathering, it's a lot of detailed designing that they're doing based on it, and then they bring it back to the whole committee.
That's a, so there, so the, the motion clearly says deliberation in the focus groups.
It clearly says what? Sorry, I lost you.
There will be deliberation.
Deliberation, so he says.
Yes. Which, to me, that's not.
Well, and these focus groups are going to be public.
No, no, but how can it not be an open meeting law violation if you have building committee members there deliberating?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm not the town clerk, I guess I, I, I tend to default back to, we do, we have an OPM here who we've hired to guide us, um, and this is how they're saying that this is typically done. I think, in fact, in, in many areas, I think the focus groups aren't even public, we thought we were being even more open meeting law careful to have them, I'm not gonna say we, I was not part of this recommendation, that was my understanding of it.
At the high school, we had focus groups, but we also had robust subcommittee work, the design committee, the sustainability subcommittee, the finance subcommittee, and as we got closer to DD, we had kicked in a FFNE and furnishings, um, technology subcommittee to look at that, but you really, that part of the budget isn't so prescribed at this point. So it, the focus groups complement the subcommittee work, not replace in any way, shape or form, because it's important to have deliberation and not, you don't, unless you're gonna start having five. And not, you don't, unless you're going to start having five hour meetings, this stuff gets pretty complicated pretty fast.
Yeah.
And so I think actually the way we left it was similar to that, because we brought the subcommittees back in. I think the final motion included focus groups doing some information gathering and bringing information back to subcommittees also at certain points there.
So I just think--
Did I say that correctly, Lori? I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking.
I think you did.
Okay.
So I, I would request, I think this needs a little cleanup, to clarify for the public, we're going to really operate for the next X months.
Yeah, I agree. I'm actually meeting with Kristin tomorrow and then the co-chairs, so we can just get more clarity and more specifics. And I, I hear your questions and I, I do think it needs a little more to it, so.
With all due respect, the OPM told your committee that you need to get out of the way and let the architect do her work, which is not appropriate. This is a, this is a collaborative effort and the building committee and the participants are a huge part of it.
Yeah, I didn't hear it that way, and I have never felt that way, but I, I will take that back.
Yeah, I didn't, I actually didn't feel it that way either. And I, you know, Cynthia, I want to touch back on how you've referenced the high school project a couple of times. And, and you're speaking on a theme close to my heart. I mean, I, you know, from the very beginning, as we started to work on facility studies here, I, I said at every meeting, we just have to make sure this process is, you know, collaborative and transparent. And we had some problems at the high school because people were concerned about transparency. And so that has been my theme and my goal this whole time. And I feel like in a way, I was almost the champion of transparency for a while and, and everybody's on board. And so I just want to say, I absolutely agree with your message of transparency and, and I'm looking at things through that lens. And I was comfortable with what they were recommending through that lens, especially as we got to the end with some subcommittees and everything. So, so that's just to say, I see the same lens. And I, I feel like, given the recommendation of how this is typically done, that that's, that's good advice to follow.
But I personally, yeah, the, the community members weren't necessarily of, of that same mind.
The community members, and the community members on the committee?
Correct.
I, I, I for one do remain concerned that the building committee, I'll use the word again, has been relegated to a, a lesser role in favor of focus groups that are going to be an open meeting law challenge that are comprised of, who knows? So I think that it was a case of a, a long debate with a lot of advocacy from our vendors. And we got to the end of our allotted time and, and made a decision. And now to Lori's point, we've got to do some cleanup.
Yep, so I think that's what this, you know, that's certainly one of my goals this week for the meeting on the 3rd.
It, it doesn't speak to the best process. I, I for one think that the committee, and I'm a member of it, has made a couple of decisions at the end of two and three hour meetings that needed to get dialed back later. And some of us, me, look back on it saying, fatigue and the, the need to get on with the rest of our day with, let's call it a poor agenda, forced decisions that maybe on reflection weren't as wise as they could have been. On this one, we'll see. And we'll see what the leadership team can do by way of interpreting what focus groups will do and won't do for this project.
Thank you for taking another look.
Appreciate it.
We will keep you posted.
We're going to move on to an action item, the donations to the Willard Library through the Willard Book Fair. I will ask for a motion that the Concord School Committee accept book donations to the Willard Library through the Willard Book Fair.
Aloud.
And a second, please.
Second.
Can you tell us a little bit about the book fair? I can imagine this is a, an odd version of what we used to do, going down the hall, browsing.
Yeah, no, virtual, so. We're kind of similar to CEF, we're just so excited that people have really engaged with whatever format things have happened and grateful that Willard, you know, able to donate back, the PTG is able to give back to the library even in these times, so.
Well, we acknowledge the Willard PTG and in fact, the, the efforts of all the PTGs this year. We have only met with them virtually too, but they've been very present in the lives of teachers and kids and leadership teams in each of our buildings. But special thanks to the group at Willard to make this possible tonight. Roll call, please.
Can I, please?
I'm so sorry, yes, forgive me.
I needed to be quiet for a while. I have a couple of questions about this. So you answered my first question, so it is from the PTG to the school library. My first question is, were these books ordered from the school? And the PTG fulfilled that order? Or did the PTG choose those titles? That's my first question. My second question, I recall our director of learning, teaching and learning, maybe a couple of meetings ago, mentioned that we are very, you know, deliberate and thorough in selecting books, especially now that we, we're engaged in DEI work and it may take up to two years to approve material, if I remember correctly. So I am putting this in parallel to that. So in terms of vetting these books, and I, I'm curious about the process before--
Yeah, so the librarians own the process of selecting books for the library regardless of how. Though, not every library book is going to go through the structure Kristin described. That's instructional materials that she's talking about and for use in the classroom. So the librarians, per their background and education, are trained in how to select and vet books. And so we rely on that professionalism. I can't say specifically whether, who, how the cash flow worked here, but I am sure the librarians are picking the books. I don't know if they gave the titles to the PTG and they, they, they ordered and paid that way or if the money went to the librarians and then they could go online and pick them. But either way, the librarians certainly pick the titles and definitely have full, full ownership of what selections are going into our libraries.
So I just want to say that I don't think I'm able to vote on it. Not having a confirmation that these books were ordered from the school, that our professionals actually chose them.
They definitely chose them.
Okay.
Yeah, so definitely.
Thank you.
I just don't know who entered the titles into the computer, if the PTG entered the titles or the librarian entered the titles. But absolutely, the librarian chose them.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
No, it's a good question.
Because I was gonna say, back when I used to go to the Willard Book Fair a couple centuries ago, the librarians would put out titles that you were encouraged to purchase for the library and you bought them in the name of a teacher.
Yes.
That was my memory.
Yes. I can't say exactly with the virtual, what that looked like, but it's certainly the librarian's title selection.
Other questions, comments? All right, might we have a roll call, please?
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Aye.
He said, aye.
Rainey, aye.
I think you--
No, thank you, Fatima, for bringing that up. That was, that was an important clarification. Gives us all some reassurance. I'm going to ask for a vote to direct the administration to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA and to inform the select board of our action.
So move? Second.
And there's a second discussion, please. I think we have reaffirmed our commitment to the present course of action. And with this statement of interest, we have affirmed the fact that the town deserves consideration in any event.
And that if accepted, there would need to be a hard look at whether or not it was worth it to move forward.
Yes, here, here, yeah. Questions or comments? And a roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Oh, aye.
Rainey, aye.
And the motion passes. And we have approached our ending hour. I want to thank everybody for their stamina once again. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Aloud.
Second. And we have a second. Thank you, Cynthia, and roll call, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Aye.
He said, aye.
Rainey, aye. All right.
Very good. We will reconvene next week at 6:30 for a very brief public meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.